Good evening, everybody, and welcome. This is a very special night. We have a couple presentations. Before we start, however, I want to advise that we met in executive session and discussed some personnel matters. Now that bit of business is over with, I'd like to call the chief and Sergeant Jones to the front and Officer Hanaho, please. Gentlemen.
Tonight's a very special occasion for many reasons. We have a couple special guests tonight. Chief Carl Knotts in the back representing the Central Bucks Regional Police Department.
Welcome.
We also have Ginger and Bradley Woodbury here. Unfortunately, Mr. Woodbury could not make it. I assume he's home tending to his health. He's doing well, I assume? Okay. So we do have his wife and son here this evening. And of course, we have Sergeant Jones and Officer Hanaho, who were here to thank you for your service to the Doylestown community. And without further ado, I would like to read your special word for this evening. On February 18th, 2021, at approximately 2:26 PM, David Woodbury, who's a 71-year-old male, suffered a sudden cardiac arrest while shoveling snow in the Doylestown Hunt subdivision in Doylestown Township. Whereas on February 18th, 2021, Sergeant Robert Jones of the Doylestown Township Police Department and Officer Jonathan Hanaho of the Central Bucks Regional Police Department were on duty and responded promptly to the medical emergency on Steeple Chase Drive and found that the patient was unconscious and unresponsive. Whereas, the officers quickly recognized that the patient was in significant distress and initiated lifesaving measures by employing an automated external defibrillator and initiating cardiopulmonary resuscitation. The patient regained consciousness prior to the arrival of advanced medical personnel and was later transported to the hospital for continued care. Whereas, the officer's quick response, recognition of the severity of the medical emergency, immediate actions, and effective CPR directly resulted in the saving of the life of David Woodbury. A failure to act or delayed act by the officers could have led to a tragic outcome. Whereas, the members of the Doylestown Township Police Department and the Central Bucks Regional Police Department are committed to safeguarding the quality of life to the residents of the Doylestown community. The Doylestown Township Police Department believes that the recognition of officers, their actions, and outstanding efforts in service to the community. Therefore, Sergeant Scott Jones and Officer Jonathan Hanaho are formally recognized for their dedication to public safety and are hereby awarded the department's lifesaving award the 16th day of March 2021.
Gentlemen, on behalf of the board, I think I can fairly end on all the residents of Doylestown Township. You make us proud. We're very grateful for your service and your skills. Officer Hanaho, we're very grateful for your regional police department and your service and your skills. And to the Woodbury family, all our best wishes for his continued speedy recovery. Thank you, guys. Thank you, chief.
Just one more thing I'd like to add, and this is reflective of both municipalities. The day in question, Officer Hanaho was on duty, and he responded. He didn't have to respond. He was nearby, I assume, heard the call go out, and volunteered as assistance. He was actually the first person on scene there and was working diligently to save Mr. Woodbury when Sergeant Jones showed up. I think it just goes to reflect the coordination that Doylestown Borough, Central Bucks Regional Police Department, and our municipality have, that it's been a long time's service to our community that we work so well together. And I'd like to thank Chief Knott for continuing that support, Officer Hanaho, and all your officers for the support you give our guys, and hopefully we'll be able to repay this service to you. To the Woodburys, good luck to you. I hope everything works out. Hope you have a long and prosperous relationship with Mr. Woodbury. Please send him our regards. Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Get some pictures outside, then.
Sergeant Jones, is that your family there?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello. Welcome.
Family, right?
Hi. Well, welcome. Come back again, okay? Good night, everybody. You're welcome to stay, but we're going to move on to our next presentation. Scott Mealy is retiring sadly, but out of necessity. It's time, right? And Keith, you want to make a presentation?
Well, that's certainly a tough act to follow, Scott, so I'll try my best to spice it up. But thank you, Board, for allowing us to talk about Scott. I would like to recognize and congratulate our water superintendent, Scott Mealy, on his pending retirement at the end of the month. Scott has been a valuable member of our management team and has contributed to DTMA's success over the last 16 years. Scott's priority through the years has always been ensuring DTMA's highest water quality and meeting our customers' expectations. Scott began his water utility career in Moreno Valley, California. Upon moving to Pennsylvania, he landed a position with a neighboring water utility and then shortly after joined the DTMA as a water operator. Scott worked weekends and overnights as necessary, learning to operate and maintain the water system. His leadership skills were noticed, and Scott quickly was promoted to chief water operator. In 2010, the position of water superintendent became available, and Scott once again was promoted, a testament to his work ethic, knowledge, and management skills. Some brief highlights of Scott's tenure included the management of the expansion of the Cross Keys Water Service area, implementing a system-wide automatic water meter replacement program, and most recently, helping establish DTMA's cross-connection and backflow prevention Scott's comdometer and personality also worked well with the regulatory agencies. Scott developed excellent working relationships with them and was responsible for all of our compliance reporting. And we certainly have a lot of compliance that water systems need to achieve, as we all know. I think most importantly, Scott was a mentor to our younger staff and also myself. We learned from his experiences and his wisdom. I often heard our operators say, "Scott was always tough but fair." And I think as a manager, that's really a nice compliment. He led by example and is currently helping to train his replacement. Scott, we're going to miss you, and we wish you the best in retirement with your wife and family. Congratulations. And now I think we have a gift.
Scott, you've been a member of the Doylestown Township family, and the administration and the people you served, they're going to miss you. And on behalf of the Doylestown Township family, we have a plaque here for you, and it reads, "Presented to Scott Mealy the 16th day of March 2021 by the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors upon his retirement, March 31st, 2021. With a career that spanned over 27 years in the water industry, we thank you for your 16 years of service and dedication in bringing clean, safe drinking water to the township, Doylestown Township Authority and community." And they also give you a little gift to go with.
Thank you.
It's a beautiful plaque.
Thank you.
Enjoy it.
It is beautiful. Thank you.
And we wish you all the best in your retirement.
I definitely appreciate it.
Whatever. I'm sure it's not going to be, you're just going to hang out a fishing rod, but whatever it is.
I'll figure something.
Yeah, enjoy.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I have a little sleeve for that award. Yeah. It'll protect it from getting scratched on your way home before you hang it up. Thank you. My pleasure. All right, moving on. Any visitors or public comment? Hearing none, moving to the announcements. Our next meeting is Tuesday, April 6th at 7:00 PM. The Doylestown, is that right?
Yep.
Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors and the Ways and Means Committee will have a budget work session on Tuesday, April 6th at 5:00 PM, and the public is all welcome to attend. Bucks County Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event is April 4th at the Bucks County Community College at 275 Swamp Road in Newtown. Registration is required, so please go to buckshw eventbrite.com for more information about waste collecting resources at Bucks County. And for that, you might want to go to buckscounty.org backslash recycling. All right, I think that's it for the announcements. There's short announcements today. Minutes' approval is the next item on the agenda for the February 16th, 2021 meeting. Everyone had a chance to review them?
Yep.
All right, yes, Nancy? Yes, Jen? By the way, Jen Herring and Nancy Santasilia are on Zoom, and sadly, Dan Wood is not feeling well tonight, so he's not zooming in. So, all right, so you had a chance to review. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Nancy?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next item. Correspond, oh, no, that's off.
That's taken off.
Yeah. Go away. Solicitor, any report?
Nothing until we get later in the agenda, Madam Chair.
Township engineer, report. Chief?
Yes, just one quick comment. On the March 11th, there was a, I believe it was a Zoom meeting regarding the southeastern road and New Britain roundabouts.
Yes.
I did attend that, and there was just a couple questions that were raised by some of the residents. I'm not so sure that PennDOT adequately addressed them. And that was regards to why, and why we're putting it there, and why is the money going there? And just the reason why is this is an eight-year project, basically, that was initiated by the police department back in 2013 after we analyzed the accident data there and requested that PennDOT make some improvements. And if you recall, back in 2014, there were some minor improvements done by striping and narrowing of the roadway that did have some effect, but did not get the ultimate desired effect. So fast forward to, I guess, three years ago now, when PennDOT started looking at the roundabout status, we basically, you know, we were kind of caught off guard as a township, but at that time, if you recall, back in three years ago, it was either use this money for these specific purposes within our community or lose it to another community. It was very clear that this money could not be fun, go towards improvements of our existing infrastructure. And I think that's what kind of got lost the other night, where they weren't really clear as to why the residents were really wanting to see the potholes fixed as opposed to something else. So I think if the residents were aware, this is an eight-year thing to improve traffic safety. We've had significant amount of accidents. We had some improvement, but we're looking to make it safe for everybody. Yeah, there will be some inconvenience during construction, but I think the ultimate goal in the end is we are going to be a much safer community, and this money has to be earmarked for this type of activity rather than to fix what's already out there. So I think you've got to separate the two, and I think if the residents had a clear understanding of that, they might be a little more comfortable with it.
Yeah, the one business owner made the comment, like, "Why are we spending money here when we have, like, what do you call it, third world zone on 6/11?"
Right. So, yeah, one doesn't really have to do with the other, and I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah. It's a good presentation. And for everybody else, it's a two-year start to finish, right?
Correct.
It's going to start in May of 2022, and it's going to finish by the spring of 2024.
No, I believe that they will do their best to direct traffic in such a manner that it's only an inconvenience rather than, I don't think it's going to be complete blockages. I think we're going to be fine.
Yeah.
We've experienced this before. Change is inevitable. So I think that when we look at traffic safety, any lives saved is, you know, is better.
Thank you for bringing that history. It wasn't explained very well, but they weren't around long enough anyway. They're rather new to the project, those guys. All right, thank you, chief. Director of Operations?
I have a number of items. The first item I have is the 2021 street sweeping contract. This is a multi-year contract. It was a base contract with the option for two one-year renewals by mutual agreement. The company that was awarded the contract originally in 2019 was Riley Sweeping. By mutual agreement, they're asking for a one-year extension. I support that. The amount for two, the total amount for two street sweepings, one in the spring, one in the fall, is $37,811.99. And then also with the hourly rate, which is for optional requested work, if needed for some reason, at $144.94 per hour.
Is that per man or per event or per project?
It's per hour. So if we ask them to come out, let's say there was an accident, or we had, sometimes we have a spill on the road, and we ask them to come out, it's per hour. That is the $144.
So it's per hour for the event?
For the...
They could send six guys, but it's still...
Usually, it's one truck and one operator.
Okay.
I'm asking for the board's approval for the 2020 street sweeping contract to Riley Sweeping.
I'll make a motion to approve the authorization of the one-year contract with all the information that Dave just laid out.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions? Anybody? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Nancy, I can't hear you. You have to say "aye" louder.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next item.
Okay, the next item is the 2020 award recommendation for our lawn maintenance contract. Same setup here. It is a multi-year contract. It is a first year out of a base year plus two additional years, so same as the street sweeping. Last year, we awarded, you awarded the contract to M&amp;M Landscaping LLC. This year, the total amount for mowing in our open space, our basins, and our parks totals $93,542.78 with one alternate, which is $1,132.32. And also, that gives us a total of $94,675.10. And 10 cents.
I'll make a motion to approve that execution of one-year contract extension.
I'll second.
Thank you. It goes without saying, these extensions wouldn't be approved without them doing the job.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Is a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Nancy. I heard that time. All right, anything else?
The final one I have here is new. This is for the, this building, the Township building, police and administration, the HVAC maintenance agreement. Mr. Rick Shea, our facilities manager, reached out to our current company that provides us with service, that is, Trosier Train. That is the company that only provides the service. That's the actual model and make of the units that are in this building, so they are the manufacturer and service company. Mr. Shea reached out to them and basically received a quote for a two-year contract, both totaling the same amount. There'll be four maintenance periods with those, so I'm asking for the board to approve a contract which will start on April 1st of 2021 and go to March 31st of 2022, and the second one will follow suit for the following year, both for the total amount each of $8,960. Again, which would be a service agreement with Trosier Train.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions on the motion on this contract? All good? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Did you vote, Nancy?
They all said aye.
Okay, thank you. Township manager?
Yes, the board has the memo from Erin Walzer, our special projects coordinator, on the extension for the septic management program. The board will recall, in 2018, we extended the deadline due to COVID for both the water testing requirements and the septic testing pumping reports. As you can see, the county of Bucks, that the health department would do the testing for about $25, and unfortunately, they stopped doing the water test during COVID. We've provided a list of other water companies, private companies, that can step in and do that at a similar price. At present, we still have about 758 out of our 1,416 properties that still need to have the water test done, and we're also provided information to the board on the only 169 out of the same 1,416 that still need to do the pumping. As you know, the pumping and reporting portion really wasn't impacted as significantly as the water testing portion. So at this time, and we did review this with our public water and sewer advisory board, basically, the suggestion is to give another six months through September 30th to allow residents who had the extension through March 31st to complete the water test. We feel that as people continue to get their COVID vaccines and feel more comfortable traveling, they'll be able to obtain the water test and get that done. However, we would not recommend extending, since it's a small portion, the pumping and reporting portion. That would still end on March 31st. They will receive notices, and we'll still give them an opportunity to get everything in for another probably 30 to 60 days, but they won't be able to go beyond that. Also, we did reach out to the water companies, just so everyone knows, to see if anyone wanted to set up some sort of special program to provide a discount or something to the township, and they were not willing to do that. We did check, though. So that is our recommendation at this time regarding the SMP program.
Okay, so there's a recommendation that we give a six-month extension to the water testing requirement and no extension to the pumping requirement. And is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion.
Anybody? Thanks, Nancy. Any questions?
I did have, I have a question. When we send out the notice to the people that we're, that they have their septic part due, that's, are we also sending out notices about people, to the people who haven't had their water testing done yet?
Yes, everybody will be communicated regardless of how they fall. We'll send notice out as well as post on the website and everything like that. We can certainly do another mailing to everybody.
Can we, can we direct them to these private companies and say it's not a fully inclusive list, but it's, you know, a list of providers if you want to get it done now?
Yes, these are the private providers, and this list is actually on the township website, has been for some time. And it's the same list when they actually go over to the health department, thinking they can get their water test done there, John, they actually get the same list. So...
Perfect.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. There was a motion and a second? Call in the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. That's 4-0, I guess.
And I just have one other quick item. I shared with the board the Bucks County report on the volunteer fire service, and as everyone knows, we are not a host municipality. Doylestown Borough is, Shell, Font, and Warrington, that serve our community. The Doylestown Fire Company is evaluating the report and has, once they complete the evaluation, they'll probably want to meet with the municipal partners, which would be the Township Borough and New Britain, and meet with us and talk about that report. So just wanted to share that information with the board.
That's about a few months away, is that...
It probably is. It'll be probably a few months.
Okay, thanks, Stephanie. Anything else?
I have nothing else.
All right, supervisors. Got anything, Nancy?
No, not tonight.
Okay. Jen?
Not tonight, thank you.
Ryan?
I have just two quick things. First, this is just a, just a comment of gratitude to the Park and Rec Committee. They've come up with some really innovative ways, which you'll be hearing from in the months to come, about how they want to, I don't think people understand, I think a lot of people, when you think about Doylestown Park System, people automatically think Kids' Castle, they think Central Park, but there's so much more that represents our Parks Department, and it's much more robust than people even know. And I'm just excited for kind of their plans and what they've put together in terms of, like, their priorities and looking forward, not just this year or next year, but five, 10 years out. So I just want to thank them. We had a nice meeting and really productive meeting this past week. And then two other things regarding vaccines. I want to give a shout out to Doylestown Health. I have heard nothing but big accolades for anyone that has received their vaccine from Doylestown Health, how organized it was. Jeff Garten is saying that he's...
Very well organized, efficient, treats you very fairly and very nicely.
Yes, so I've heard that, so I just want to thank them. But I also want to just ask anybody to reach out. The whole process with vaccines, it's, and the rollout, it's complicated. It's, it takes a little bit of tech savviness, it's, you know, again, it's new, so there's going to be hiccups, and I think the people that are probably affected the most are elderly. So I'm asking to reach out to your family, friends, and most especially neighbors that may not have that support, to make sure that, you know, if you can lend a hand, I know we helped someone dig through to get on at CVS, you know? And people don't always understand the process, so I saw, I got a picture sent to me last week on 6/11, taken by one of my neighbors, and it was a gentleman in a tiny little sedan, and he had a piece of paper taped in his car, and it said, "90 years old, veteran, still don't have a vaccine. Can you help?" And, you know, it broke my heart to think that he's driving around not, you know, probably not knowing how to get that done. And I think if we all know who he was, we would have been able to help him, right? So just reach out. That's easy.
Okay, thank you. All right, Bucks County Law Enforcement Virtual Training waiver agreement.
If you'll recall, at the last meeting, I believe it was, the board approved waiving land development for the county of Bucks for their virtual training center, which is located in their facilities back behind the prison. And it was conditioned on the execution by the county of the, as a township, of the waiver of land development agreement. I prepared the draft, sent it to the county, they're fine, they're going to approve it probably tomorrow at the commissioners' meeting. So I believe I would recommend the board approve the agreement so they can get started on finalizing their construction and meet their grant deadlines.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about the proposed land development waiver agreement?
No. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, you're good to go, Jeff. Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's all I have.
That's all you have? All right, new business. We got some sewer hookup requests, Cicero and Bergstrasser.
Yes. One is a vacant property, and they sit on a sewer line, so they're looking to connect on off a shady retreat road. Their information is complete. And then Bergstrasser is in need of connecting to public sewers well off the Sandy Ridge Line. So I'd ask both of those to be approved so we can submit them to DEP for further evaluation.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve both of these applications?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Ryan first, Jen second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 She got, she got quick to the draw there, Jen.
I'm just going first because I know you guys are delayed, so I'm trying to help the process.
Okay. 2021 trash hauler permits.
This is the list of haulers that have complied with the ordinance to be able to submit their application for residential, commercial, both, and construction debris removal for Doylestown Township.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the waste hauler permit, permits?